Okay, it just says by here, Terry.
Okay.
So...
All right, well, you can ask if Terry's got any comments.
Terry will. He would be, Lindy would be in a public, public hearing session.
Okay, all right.
Yes. Ah, you're trying to mess me up with your game. I'm gonna give both sides fifteen minutes. That don't matter. I mean, that's, that's traditional speaking for a public hearing.
They're not happy.
Okay. Okay, we're getting ready for the show. Getting ready for the show. If I could have your attention, please. If you're willing and able, would you be so kind as to stand for the invocation? Remain standing for the flag, and I would like to introduce to you Reverend Dr. Jacqueline Rose Tucker from the Red Oak United Methodist Church. If she would come forward and have an invocation for us. Welcome, yes ma'am. Welcome and thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Let us pray. Most merciful and mighty God, we thank you for the blessing of this day. We thank you for the blessing of wisdom and strength. We pray for our commissioners who come together and those who will join in this meeting for a fruitful time, and we pray for them that it may be well with them, that it may be well with all of the cities that they represent. We pray that during our time will be fruitful and that the decisions made will be given to you glory and honor. In this we trust and believe, in this we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty PM Tuesday, May the nineteenth, twenty fifteen, come to the order. Announcements. The following items was advertised but has been postponed at the requested applicant and will not be heard for this meeting. The public meeting will be heard at a future meeting and the property will be reposted. Public hearing, RZ dash fourteen dash zero one, Meredith Home of McDonough, Georgia, requests rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture to R three, single-family residential for property located at three five four Wilson Road and land lot one one four one forty-three of the seventh district. The property consists of eleven point six eight three plus or minus acres and request is for a single-family residential subdivision, District Three. Presenter Dante Gibbs, planning zoning director, that will not be heard. So if you're here for that zoning, it will not be heard. Acceptance of the agenda, I would like to suggest, number one is the Kinsley Grace item that was on here, which should be number six, is removed. Reason being, they had some issues come up and they couldn't have the whole family and the purpose of having this recognition was the family here. So I'm gonna suggest we amend the agenda to take that off. And then we have one that was gonna hear, a request made by Jane Rutledge. She got stung by a wasp today. She's allergic to red wasp, so she was in the emergency room, so she won't be here. Then we have a request by Jim Elkins regarding record service. He called and he will not be here. And also, for the benefit of most of the public that's here for some reason, and I think it's for the Jackson, Jackson Road. So I would like for the board to consider moving the public hearing for that particular issue from item twenty C to...
Seven B.
To twelve B.
Seven B.
Seven, oh.
Seven B. Twenty C to seven B.
Seven B?
Twenty C, twenty C to seven B.
Twelve, that's ten. It's, it's, it's under the Honorable Bartlet's Resource Court, is that correct? Yeah, B.
Twelve, you said seven B.
It goes right here.
Right. Twenty C, twelve B.
It's twenty, sir.
Twelve B. You're right.
Mine's right, is that correct? Okay. We will be moving exhibit twenty over to be heard at twelve B. Does anybody else see anything needs to be corrected or amended to that effect? If not, does somebody move, we adopt the public, the agenda as amended.
So move.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
District Six at one, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Thank you. I'm gonna try to keep this up with name proclamation. Next, we'd recognize our Communication Director, Michelle, I mean Melissa, and she will have a proclamation for the National Emergency Medical Services Week. And when we get through, we can have a picture with, with the Fire Department, EMS. Would that be correct? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. Tonight, we have a proclamation designating the week, May eighteenth through twenty-second, as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas, access to quality emergency care can dramatically improve the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas, the emergency medical services team consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas, the members of the Henry County Fire Department engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education in order to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the observance of Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of May eighteenth through twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, be known as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong, and we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies, programs, and activities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincerest appreciation for the vital contributions that EMS professionals make in our community each and every day. This nineteenth day of May, two thousand and fifteen, signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
Thank you.
And Chief Lacy is here, he likes to have a few words.
Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board for their support of EMS in our community. As you know, the Henry County Fire Department provides the emergency nine-one-one service for our community, and nearly eighteen thousand, or more than eighteen thousand times each and every year, you see our ambulances going to serve the citizens of Henry County in their times of need. So I want to thank you for that support, and I'd like to recognize those gentlemen sitting in the back of the room, we'll call them up for a picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Just get a picture. Public comment, this is allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wished to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. I don't have a, we have none. Okay, the next item, we've taken off the agenda. The next one, we'll recognize Mr. Charles Pierce to discuss a volunteer program handicap. If you need to show some pictures, Stephanie would be more delighted to help you. If you wanna put some on the overhead or something.
On the side.
Got you, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Council members. Some fifteen years ago, I helped organize and design in Fremont, California, what's called the Handicap Patrol. Right now, it's going eighty members strong, four vehicles on the road, and we certainly need this in our community. What I have witnessed out there in the public is the abuse of handicap parking. Now, this organization, I will work with Chief Nichols and his department, and I need your support. It's all volunteers, I will need some sources from the county. Is outlined in the folder that I have presented to you, the red folder. That's about all I can put together in that folder. You'll see names of officers in the city of Fremont that you can call and get their backup on this. It is something that this county, it really needs. The abuse of handicap parking out there is, it's rapid, it's terrible. We observe it every day that we're out in the community. These volunteers will come from people of age. We have also volunteers from the young. They will be out there in cars to observe this, issue citations, which I will lay out before the chief with him, hopefully get and be able to get a meeting with him, so I could outline it more clearly. I'll take any questions, sir.
I think what we need to do is let the board discuss this amongst themselves and see if they wanna do it.
Yes, sir.
And then see how they can, somebody can coordinate this with the police department and see how it can, and let council review it and see, work out all those details.
Yes, sir, I know there's some expense involved, but the biggest job of this program is getting your volunteers and getting the right people out there with us.
Yes, sir. Good, if you can...
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Yes, sir. Consent agenda, the following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, the chair will provide opportunity to add or delete any items. Public safety, resolution accepting one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents from the United States Secret Service Financial Crime Task Force. Resolution authorizing use of a state seized funds and asset forfeiture funds to pay for projected cost of four police personnel to attend the IACPA Women's Leadership Institution of Branson, Missouri. Resolution authorizing the Henry County Police Department to make a donation of one thousand to the National Law Enforcement Museum using funds in the federal asset forfeiture and seized funds account, building and plans, resolution supporting the Dream Home Project television show, and allow for certain waivers to the Henry County Code ordinances. Does anybody wanna add to or delete on the consent agenda item? If so, if somebody would move to approve the consent items as read. Have a motion District Five? Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have resource, resolution request and approval to submit an application to the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Accountability Court Funding Committee Criminal Justice, and will be recognized by Deborah Brown. Yes, ma'am.
The two honorable judges that were mentioned as presenters are not here, and I have been sent in their place. I apologize for that. Hopefully, you have had a chance to look at the executive summary. It's a very simple process, we're just asking for approval to apply for the grant. This is a transportation grant, and it was added to the typical annual grant that we apply for, that we came probably a month ago to ask permission to apply for, from the Office of the Governor Accountability Court Funding Committee. They have, Governor Deal and the General Assembly came up with an extra million dollars to put towards specific transportation costs to support the accountability courts. This will be added to that annual award, if we are awarded that. We, in terms of the grant, there's not a match that's required, but of course, your application will look stronger if you have a match. We would like to have a match that's included there, but we are not asking for any new funds to have that match. The funds to reflect a match are already included in our budget, so no new funds are being requested for that purpose.
Do I got any questions to comment? Tentatively, I had this on the consent agenda because it said there's no required matching funds, but just like she stated, they may make some matching funds, so that means we'd be spending money whether it's already there or not. So, nobody has any question, there's a resolution in the book. Board of Commissioners granting approval at the Henry County Resource Court to apply for a grant for the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordination Council for FY two thousand and sixteen.
Vote to approve.
Have a motion District Three? Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna have one we just moved. We got a resolution to the Board of Commissioners temporary closing a portion of River Road for the Henry County Water Authority. Mr. Terry McNichols is the presenter.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board members. Henry County Water Authority is experiencing problems with people hunting or poaching, dumping, trespassing, damaging fences, gates, signs, and et cetera on their property they own on River Road. The authority owns a property on both sides of this road for approximately eight thousand seven hundred and six feet. In addition, the Department of Transportation has a lot of problems with four-wheelers tearing up the gravel section or dirt road section of this roadway. The authority has requested that the section of roadway that runs through their property be closed and fences be placed across the road to prevent public vehicular access. The authority will place the fences across the road at their expense and will allow access to citizens that walk this section of the roadway. Henry County DOT recommends that a cul-de-sac be placed at each end of the closed section. The authority is in agreement with them paying for all materials needed in building the cul-de-sacs and will also furnish any right-of-way needed. The Department of Transportation will furnish labor and equipment. Section of road is on your exhibit A. Important to note, the section of roadway will be closed, but we are not abandoning the right-of-way, so the county will retain ownership of that. The intent here is to temporarily close the road until the Henry County Board of Commissioners deem it necessary to open it back up for their interest or the best interest of the public. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll save my comments after the public hearing.
Chairman, I think this is a public hearing.
Sir?
I believe this is a public hearing.
Yes, sir, it's a public hearing. Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we will move into the public hearing. We will give fifteen minutes for people that is in favor of closing this, we'll give...
I have something to say about the red flag.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, what I'm doing, I'm giving fifteen minutes, I'm giving fifteen minutes for the people that oppose it, and I'm giving fifteen minutes to the people that are in favor of it. So I'm gonna start the clock. When you come up here, state your name for the record, please, and everybody that's against it, the total time will be fifteen minutes. So however much time you don't take, somebody else can use it. So if you would, state your name, and this is the fifteen-minute segment for people that is against the closing. So the clerk stop, the clerk, clock starts now.
My name is Diane Column, and I live in District Three, and as Gary Barham and Bo Moss will remember, we had a large public hearing, and there was a large, I mean, a large town hall meeting, and there was a large turnout, and the majority of the people were against the closing of this road. It is used quite often by the residents that live in that area. I use it myself, weekly, and I also think it is a hazard to close it because that would limit us to only one exit out of the area, and right now, we have two. It is a public road, and it needs to remain a public road. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Mudlock. I live at twenty-one oh five Post Oak Court, right off of River Road. I was a little misguided by this paper here. The agenda here says that it's gonna be a temporary thing. I don't think it should be locked out. On the snapping show side, if something drastic happened up there, how are we gonna get out? Who is gonna come and unlock the gates? How long is it gonna take? That don't get it. They talk about some of the things that's happening up there. The Water Authority had the opportunity for that to be paved when the snapping show side was, but no, uh-uh. Now they want to lock it off. That is a county road. People may use that road from all over this county. They're not even up here to be able, we didn't know this was gonna be a vote. About the hunting up there, I think our authorities could stop that. Anyway, I don't really agree with it. The wildlife is given their life until once a year, then the Water Authority has a hunt down there. That's like tying something to a tree and shooting it. It don't need to be done that way. This road can be used by people that comes there to see relatives. And that, that, it's just a county road that people don't like. I don't know why the Water Authority wants, it's just something for them. You're gonna wind up doing this, you're gonna put more traffic on snapping shows. You don't need no more traffic on snapping shows. Let us, school bus be coming in from the east, one going the other way from the west, when they get together, you ain't got no road left. None whatsoever. When you go down snapping shows like that, you have to dodge a mailbox. That's just unfeasible for me, and I didn't come prepared to say a lot of things, but I do appreciate the transportation people getting this out even though it's not up today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Okay, I'm gonna reset the clock for fifteen minutes. Anybody that would like, that's in favor of this, if you would, come to the podium, state your name. It don't matter, they're both hot.
I'm right-handed, so I'll pick this side.
Okay, take the other one. Nice kidding, wait.
Well, I can get over here. Well, I'm right-handed, I wanna go to the left side, but I'm gonna do whatever makes you happy, how about that? I'm Allen Benton, I reside at five hundred River Road, and I have lived in Henry County all my life, except for a small time where I moved right across the river and lived in Newton County for about four years. I currently live at five hundred River Road, I live directly on River Road, I would say approximately three hundred yards to where the dirt road starts. I travel that road a minimum of twice a day. A lot of times, it's more than that. Own stock in that BP down there at two twelve and eighty-one, I go down there so much. I've lived on River Road for about eight years, and I actually have firsthand knowledge of all the activity that goes on, and that has been taking place down there on that one point six four mile stretch of dirt road, on River Road. I'm gonna speak now as to some of the things that goes on down there. I think it's no mystery that the county's had several calls, and a lot of folks know some idea of what goes on, but they probably don't know the validity that I see on a nightly basis, a weekly basis, and let you know a little about how it directly impacts us residents that live directly on River Road, not miles away from there. One thing I'd like to speak about is the damage. As I've lived down there, I've noticed the Water Authority did a great job of fencing it off, and multiple times, I've went down there and seen fences cut. You can see them from the road where people have snipped them, pulled them back, so they can get their four-wheelers in there, and of course, damaged the Henry County property, Henry County Water Authority property. There's been gates torn down, not just torn down in a way that they can be put back up, but physically run a pickup truck through the middle of them. Any rainy day you pick, when we get some of these good thunderstorms and it rains for several inches, you can see a parade of four-wheel drive pickup trucks going down there to tear up the road. Now, I'll be honest with you, I was a country boy when I was a young'un, and I still am now. I have put my share of dirt on a pickup truck, but we never tore up a county road doing it. We respected the roads, that's not what's happening. They are tearing these roads, it's one of the, probably the greatest mud bogs in the county, and it's getting used as such. Closing it off is gonna stop a lot of that, stop all of it. Trash, terrible trash and dumping problems. Just this week, I noticed some couches. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do this. If there's any way that I could maybe set this, but I do, I have multiple pictures of the road conditions and the trash on my iPad. If there's any way that y'all can get that up there, I'd be more than happy to scroll through a few of these pictures, just to show you how bad the road conditions are. I don't think you can really see it.
I think we got you.
There's some, and this is a small snippet. There's some, and this is a small snippet, this was one afternoon that I took some of these pictures, well, multiple afternoons, but this would just be one section of the road, and you can see the terrible rutting in it. And it's just a complete lack of respect from, oh, there'll be some right there. Here's some that are probably not on there. Speaking of trash, if anybody wants a couch, you can pick up one down there, and there's a bunch of trash right there, and I think our county did a good job of finding out who did that, and hopefully, they will, here's several more. Turns into a, it turns into a playground. Few more things of trash, and again, this is, this is where I live. This is, in essence, my subdivision. There may be some opposition to this being closed, you know, complaining about the trash, but my question to them is, would they want this going on in their neighborhood? Here we go. Deer that have been shot off the road. People do like to walk down there and look at the deer, and I understand that, but what's happening is there being illegally poached down there. I have personally got in my truck in the middle of the night and followed folks that I know have shot deer down there. Deer carcasses, various animal carcasses, lawn trash, people pulling whole trailer loads of trash off on the side of the road. These are a lot of the things that can be stopped from this, and it doesn't need to be going on in the county. I'll speak a little bit to criminal activity. Now, yes, I'm not down there. I don't really see what goes on. This is all speculation. But when multiple vehicles are driving down a lonely dirt road in the middle of the night at one or two o'clock in the morning, and sitting down there for fifteen or twenty or thirty minutes, and then turning around and coming right back up the same way they came, as my grandmother said, nothing good goes on after the sun goes down. So I really think that, you know, you can always speculate as to what goes on down there, but after hours, just parades of cars going down, parades of trucks hanging out, turning around, and leaving. Over the last twelve months, I believe there's been eighty-five calls made just on that road for various things, complaints, gunshots. That's just to Henry County. That's not the calls that have been made to the Water Authority. That's not what has been reported to any of the Water Authority employees. They've been, they have found stolen cars down there. About three or four weeks ago, I went down there, I was probably nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, there was an F-250 flipped in a ditch, it had done a complete rollover. Henry County Police was there. Whoever was driving it fled the scene. There was an eyewitness that seen it happen, and they were told to mind their business by the driver of the truck and go on about their way. Whether they caught him or not, I don't know. This property has been and can be used for good things. The Henry County Water Authority has hosted several children's hunts down there that, under rave reviews, I went down there and watched them. You ought to have seen the smiles on some of these kids' faces. This property can be used for very good things in the county. However, if vandalism, the criminal activity, and the damage to the road continues, that may not be a viable option. I went around and got a petition signed, and I did do it just on River Road. The ones that directly live on the road, this is our community right there. We live directly on River Road. I did not have one person refuse to sign it. Now, don't get me wrong, it may not have been two-hundred-and-fifty signatures, but it speaks in numbers on percentages. Out of the people that I hit on River Road, about eighty percent of the houses answered the door. Some of them didn't, but nobody refused to sign it overwhelmingly. It was a yes, hand me the pen. No questions asked. We live in this area. We see directly what goes on down there. We see it, and we live it. You know, ask anybody that's opposed to this, would you put up with this kind of activity in your backyard or in your area where you live if there was a simple, low- or no-cost solution to the county that could be made? Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
Will we get to rebuttal?
Say again?
Will we get to rebuttal?
No. No.
We all live on River Road, and it's kinda hard to follow my neighbor Alan here. I am totally for closing River Road. Everything Alan said, Mr. Benton said, is true. There's shooting going on on the weekends and at various times down there, deer being shot at, the dumping and all, and the speeding on River Road. They come off the dirt road, they hit the pavement, they're fine. We're about three hundred yards from the dirt road on the paved part. It's a win-win for the county to close this road. We can get a dirt road off the county's books. And also, we can get a dirt road off the county's books. We don't have to pay a million dollars to do it, which we have a SLOSH program that does a great job on getting a lot of the dirt roads paved and all. So yes, I'm in favor of closing River Road. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Hello, I appreciate y'all letting us give you, give us the information for you, but my name is Jack Conley. I live at 250 River Road. I'm impacted in the road situation tremendously. I have a family of seven that it's a situation with when it comes to the speed limit on that road. They continue on right past my road, or right past my driveway directly to the dirt road. It's a, it's a safety hazard. It truthfully is as far as the speed's concerned. I was, as far as when it comes to a one-way, one-out, one-way, one-out, what have you, I mean, that's how neighborhoods are. I mean, it's a situation that there's one way in and one way out in any kind of neighborhood you have, to where that's really not an option, there really, really is not valid in the situation. As far as when it comes to the criminal activity that I actively walk and run within that road about every other day, sometimes every day, we've definitely seen very many situations when we get to the dirt road of, you know, two or more cars that are in a situation that if they are noticed, they quickly drive off. We've had needles, picked up needles on the side of the road, as well as jumped in the ditch to get out of the way for people coming off that road. So it's really a situation that it's, it's not a good situation, and I believe that if we were to close that area, it would prevent anything from occurring or happen in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard?
My name's Mickey McGowan. I live at 274 River Road, and I guess everybody has just basically said the whole thing. I don't wanna say it again, but I just have to echo that the, the traffic down there at night with the, everything going on down there is just, it's just terrible. It needs to stop some way or the other. You guys can make that decision. I thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'm gonna declare that the public hearing has been completed, and I would ask Chair if he would come back, and if anybody's got any commissioners, has got any comments or questions, now would be the time to do it.
Chair, a couple comments. Talking with the police chief, he confirmed today that in the past year that we've had eighty-five calls just from the police and fire department on River Road alone, not the subdivision, just on River Road in the last year. Another thing, we, the school bus issue that you mentioned, we've got a letter from the school, the Board of Education, saying that they don't use that portion of River Road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Tony Cornell contacted the Board of Education, or Cliff's Rouse, who's over the school buses, and he did reply that at this time, they do not have a bus routed to use that section of River Road. And this email was dated of December 2014.
Okay. And I know I've had a conversation with the fire chief and the police chief, and it said they, it wouldn't interfere with any of their operation if we closed this section of road down. The other thing is, you know, is I have gotten tons and tons of calls about this. Alan Benton has got my cell number, I just don't really know how many times he's called me about complaints down there, but I know I've called the police on a number of occasions trying to get them to go down there and clean up whatever we can, and it's hard to catch somebody down there. And it bothers me that we got a section of road, and I understand it's a public road, and I understand that, and we're not gonna give up that public road. If we can ever get to the point where we can pave that road, which you told me today it would cost over two million dollars to pave that road.
Yes, sir. By the time you do the design, construction, utility relocation, and all the things that, you know, it would cost the administration of the projects, it's a little, just over two million dollars. That's correct.
Now, one other thing that I wanted to talk briefly about, I talked to Mr. Medlock the other day on the phone, and he addressed some concerns, the same concerns he had today, about if something happens up on snapping shows, the other end of the perspective, if, you know, what are we gonna do? And I assured him that we'll work with the Water Authority, they have agreed to this with you DOT and the Police Department, that if something happened, in an event something happened, we would be able to open those gates up and get people back out on the road, whichever way we had to go.
I'm gonna make an attempt to, to say something if I'm incorrect. Somebody from Water Authority can straighten me out, but I believe that they have all their interior roads mapped out, and I think they're gonna have a way for the fire department to be able to get down in there. I don't know if it's gonna be knock boxes or whatever. It's something I think that could be worked out, where they will have emergency access in there, 'cause that's, one of their plans is to make sure that if they have workers down in there and something happens, that access, you know, could be gained through there. So I believe those could be a way to work that out, where, say, 911 or the fire department could have access through there. I do know that, you know, we plan on putting gates in there so it can be accessible. I'm sure it could be worked out where we possibly could put the gates where we could open it back up, you know, in an emergency-type situation. But just as to kinda answer that, obviously, if there was some kind of catastrophic event on either end of the road that closed the access, I mean, we have people on call, we would come in and respond as we would on any other type of emergency, but there kinda is a back, a second plan that, you know, if the catastrophe was bad enough, I'm sure we could open it back up for a temporary basis or to get access in and out of there.
The biggest problem I see is we just don't have enough traffic on that road, and the kind of traffic, we, we just don't, a lot of it, we don't need. At some point in time, I feel that the county will probably reopen this road and pave it when the funds come available. I yield the floor to any other commissioners for any comments.
I yield the floor to District One.
Thank you. Did you do a traffic count?
Yes, sir, I did, and that...
Before you do that, let me ask you, wouldn't it be hard to do an accurate traffic count when there's a lot of people going down there that really don't live in that area that is back and forth? As far as people that actually use the road for commuting from house to wherever?
Of course, this, this section that we're closing is all Water Authority property, so there's no houses on the section that we're gonna fence or close off, but the, the twenty-four-hour traffic count was seventy-seven. That includes cars going in both directions. It was like forty-five in one direction and, or some, the total was seventy-seven anyway, seventy-seven cars a day. So that's, that's...
Yeah, I was just wondering, it'd be hard to make a good accurate count because of cars that are going down there just to park and then turn around and leave.
Well, that would have included any cars that went down there, Water Authority vehicles, you know, anybody that used it, so I don't know how many trips a day the Water Authority may ride up and down that road, how many they're accountable for, but they would have been included in that volume.
So it's probably less pe, less citizens living in that area that actually...
Everybody that was using it, except for the Water Authority, is basically cutting through there to go out one, one way or the other.
Anybody else have any comments? The comments I have, we've been looking at this and talking about it for probably a year. I don't think there's any board member up here that has any interest in permanently closing it. The unfortunate thing, it's really out in the boonies to where you can't practically put policemen out there most of the time, and during the rainy season, it'd have to be in four-wheel-drive vehicles. So this right here is just a temporary fix to a significant problem. Now, is this gonna fix it permanently? Probably not, but we at the point here to where we have to try something within, within our reach to try to take care of a serious situation. As, as the area grows up, maybe the board can come up with the money and pave it. So that's, that's a concern I have. I understand the people, it's, gives them a way in and a way out, but the fact is, it gives all these other people, and then I'm looking at this thirty-some-odd, thirty-five names on this petition here, the people that actually live on it, and they wanna close it as well. So I would be prepared to vote to temporary close it, which the resolution states here, and then we need to monitor it, and then when the board sees fit, then when we determine it, we can afford it, and it's in the best interest, then we'll consider opening it back up. But I don't, I would not be in favor of closing it permanently because that's, carries some implications. So having said that, does anybody else have any comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book, the resolution of the Board of Commissioners to temporarily, temporarily closing a portion of River Road for the Henry County Water Authority. Now, we're not closing it for them, but the resolution says that, it's in conjunction with them, and it's also in conjunction with Henry County Police having to address this area as well.
I motion to approve.
I motion to approve resolution. Does anybody, is second?
Thank you.
Have a second from District One? Any further discussion? Hold and favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, and same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Public Safety Resolution Warning Bid of Vehicle Equipment For the Police Department Authorizing Purchasers Said Equipment From West Chatham Warning Device. Major Keith Going. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. A resolution before use to request the award of a contract for vehicle equipment for the Police Department and request the purchase of said items utilizing that contract. February 2015, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 1549, authorizing the funds to equip twenty-seven Dodge Chargers for the Police Department. On April 21st of 2015, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 15123, authorizing the purchase of fifteen new police vehicles by using SLOSH IV funds. Request was bid through the purchasing department and posted on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. Bid invitations were sent out via the Team Georgia Marketplace, and six vendors responded. The bid tabulation, bid number 1548, indicates West Chatham Warning Devices was the lowest bidder for the equipment and installation. Police Department requests to award the contract to West Chatham Warning Devices and request to purchase twenty-seven contracted packages for police vehicles for a total amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and three cents, using funds from capital overlay and vehicles. And SLOSH IV requests to purchase fifteen of these same contracted packages in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-eight dollars and thirty-five cents using SLOSH IV funds. We're requesting at this point for the award of the contract and for the authorization of the purchase.
Anybody have any questions or comments? We have a resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for vehicle equipment for the Police Department authorizing the purchase of said equipment from West Chatham Warning Devices. Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second, District Four. Any further discussion? Hold and favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Resolution warning, the... Yes, sir. Resolution awarding the purchase of one ALS, Advanced Life Support Simulator in an amount of $19,406.32 to the Southeastern Emergency Equipment for the Henry County Fire Department. Chief.
The resolution that you see before you is for an ALS, an Advanced Life Support Simulator for the fire department. This is used in training for our paramedic program, and this is the lowest price and the most responsive bid, as it was posted, bid number 15-49 on the website of Henry County and the Team Georgia Marketplace.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Have a resolution, Board of Commissioners questioning award of purchase of one Advanced Life Support Simulator in the amount of $19,406.32 to Southeastern Emergency Equipment. Somebody have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District Four. Any further discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Next, we have a resolution awarding the purchase of 21 self-contained breathing apparatus and 19 bottles in the amount of $111,948.22 to Fisher Safety for the Henry County Fire Department. Chief.
Again, this is for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and 19 bottles, which will carry compressed air for these breathing apparatus. The recommendation was to purchase from Fisher Safety based on their pricing provided and the total cost of their quote. This was part of the purchase, or part of the equipment purchase that was approved on February 17th with the new apparatus that we purchased, the new fire trucks that we purchased on that date. Resolution number 15-49.
Anybody got any questions, comments? Have a resolution, Board of Commissioners, to award the purchase of 21 self-contained breathing apparatus and 19 bottles in the amount of $111,948.22 to Fisher Safety. Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. Same sign. Resolution awarding purchase of light and serving equipment for the F-250 pickup truck in the amount of $35,234.48 to West Chatham Warning Device for the Henry County.
Again, these are the warning lights for the four battalion vehicles that have previously been purchased, the F-250 trucks that have been purchased for our battalion officers, and this was, this was posted, bid number 1551, on the website of Henry County and Team Georgia Marketplace. We're recommending that the award go to West Chatham Warning Devices in that amount, $35,234.48.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Have a resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners requesting award the purchase of light and serving equipment for four F-250 pickup trucks in the amount of $35,234.48 to West Chatham Warning Device.
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Four, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Technology Services Resolution approving a network digital video recorder upgrade DVR for the administration building. Mr. Floyd, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. The item before you, it will allow us to upgrade a very old network security system we have here, digital cameras. It will also allow us to expand an existing DVR server, providing some cost savings to that, but it will also tie the security cameras here into the other cameras we've installed at the jail, the courts, and other buildings in the county, to get a standard system to install in the county. Funds are budgeted within facilities maintenance contingency funds at a cost of $33,700.
Anybody have any questions?
Skip, who's gonna install the camera?
It'll be Comtech, and that's done on a sole source through Comtech, and the installation is done through Comtech on a annual contract basis.
Annual contract?
Yes.
Any further questions, any comments? Have a resolution approving network digital video recorder upgrade for the administration building. Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Resolution awarding a bid for the purchase of a Kubota KX080-43, correction 4 Romeo 3 excavator. Mr. Stroud, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Henry County Stormwater Management Department has four full-time construction crews responsible for the maintenance, replacement, and oral installation of all stormwater ponds, storm drains, and drainage wells located within plaided easements, as well as assisting Henry County DOT on projects located inside our right-of-way. Two of the excavators that we currently have in our fleet were purchased back in 2006 and have almost reached the end of their everyday useful life expectancy. We'd like to authorize the purchase of this excavator to relegate one of those as a backup. Also, we tend to allow Henry County DOT to also borrow our mini excavators. Sometimes they have projects that are located in areas that don't require the larger excavators that they have, and some days when we've got all of them out on the job, they're not available to be able to loan those gentlemen to do. Got a local vendor to submit us a bid. We took that bid and, or quote, excuse me, cross-referenced it to our state contracts as well as our national contracts, actually found that we could get a better deal by putting this out for a sealed bid. The bid number 1550 was administered through our purchasing department. It was posted on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. We received nine qualified vendors. The recommendation is to purchase the equipment from Mason Tractor and Equipment with the lowest match quote of $80,948. Mason Tractor is a local vendor located in McDonough, Georgia, and their submitted bid fell within the 5% of the overall low bid for this solicitation. As offered in the Henry First Initiative, Mason Tractor Company elected to match the overall low bid and met all the requirements detailed in the local vendor initiative. All funds for this purchase are available in the capital equipment account for Stormwater. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
I just got a call.
Yes, sir.
Wade, I'm just real happy that Mason Tractor has got this price, and I'm just thrilled about it.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir, District One.
Mason's gonna match the $80,948, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And be on a local vendor, then. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Have a resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of a Kubota KX08-4R3 excavator.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mrs. Stroud.
Thank you very much.
Resolution request authorization to purchase 100 Salto XS4 electronic locks from Atlanta South Safe and Lock in the amount of $44,000. Mr. Keeble.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Commissioners. A little extra history background on this. We are, Henry County Board of Commissioners are the second-oldest Salto account in North America, and when I talked to the Salto representative the other day, they number almost 10,000 accounts now, so we were number two to start using Salto in North America. Because of that, Salto, through our sole-source vendor, Atlanta South Safe and Lock, contacted us with a sale offer for us to purchase 100 XS4 Salto electronic locks for 50% off the list price. This is an excellent value due to the fact we have several existing buildings that need extra access control and several new buildings which will be coming online in the near future, and will need this control. We're also in the process of relocating departments within the court system, and they will also require this type of access control. The purchase of the 100 Salto electronic locks will ensure us units for these upcoming needs that we're aware of, and it will allow us to have stock units for replacement at 50% off the regular price. There are funds available in facilities maintenance budget to pay for this. Staff recommends the purchase of this item through Atlanta South Safe and Lock as a sole vendor for Salto.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners, to purchase 100 Salto XS4 electronic locks.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two?
Second.
Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Resolution request authorization to purchase three Sony professional camcorders.
Commissioners?
Good evening.
Good evening. The Henry County Communications Department is responsible for the internal and external communications of Henry County government, its department, and its commissioners. In the scope of the Communications Department's work, they operate Henry TV, which was established in 2007 as a means of informing citizens of Henry County on the official actions of their government. The Communications Department has been approved to replace certain aging equipment, specifically the Sony NXCam professional camcorders. The department requested pricing from the purchasing department for the three Sony NXCam camcorders, and the purchasing department provided a quote from National Joint Powers Alliance in the amount of $11,642.64. The Communications Department has budgeted funds for these cameras in the small equipment account in the amount of $11,642.64, and request that you approve this purchase.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? No, we have a resolution, Board of Commissioners authorizing expenditure of $11,642.64 for the purchase of professional camcorders. Somebody move in that direction?
Move.
Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we're gonna move into SPOLOST. Resolution awarding a bid for engineering design service for Lake Dow Rogers Road at Roser Road. Mr. Romero, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, and Board members. SPOLOST IV was approved by the Boulders in November 2013. Lake Dow at Rogers at Roser is an approved District Three SPOLOST IV project. The purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for short-listed firms for the SPOLOST-funded transportation projects, intersections, including sidewalks, bid number 15-52 for the design services of Lake Dow Rogers Road at Roser Road. Five sealed bids were received and reviewed. Funding for design services is available in the project budget. A traffic study will be conducted at this intersection to determine whether a roundabout or a traffic signal will be the best type of improvement at this intersection. The lowest bid is $82,500 from Heathen Lineback Engineers. Staff recommends awarding the bid design for Lake Dow Rogers Road at Roser Road to Heathen Lineback in the amount of $82,500.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding the bid for engineering design service for Lake Dow Rogers Road at Roser Road?
Move to approve.
Motion by District Three?
Second.
Second by District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Resolution awarding a bid for engineering services for the Simpson Mill at Hampton Locust Grove Road. Rocky, good evening again.
Good evening, Chairman, again. Simpson Mill Road at Hampton Locust Grove is an approved District Two SPOLOST IV project. Again, the purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for the short-listed firms for the SPOLOST-funded transportation projects, intersections, including sidewalks, bid number 15-53 for design services of Simpson Mill at Hampton Locust Grove Road. Five sealed bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available in the project budget. A traffic study will be conducted at this intersection to determine whether a roundabout or a traffic signal will be the best type of intersection improvement. The lowest bid is $87,800 from URS Corporation. Staff recommends award of the bid for the design services of Simpson Mill at Hampton Locust Grove Road to URS in the amount of $87,800.
Anybody have any comments or question? If the clerk would be kind enough to record this, the resolution in the book says the Resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the engineering design service for Lake Dow Rogers Road, when in fact it says whereas Simpson Mill Road at Hampton Locust Grove Road is in District Two. So, the resolution needs to read the resolution in itself. If you'll look in the book, you can just change that. Let me, so if somebody would move to approve a resolution for the Simpson Mill Hampton Locust Grove Road, which is in District Two-
Amendment.
Have a motion District Two, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution awarding a bid for engineering services, Jodico Road at Oak Grove Road at Jodico Road, Daley Mill. Rocky.
Yes, Chairman. Jodico Road at Oak Grove Road and Jodico Road at Daley Mill are approved District Three SPOLOST IV projects. We have, these are two different projects, but we have combined them into one since both of them are off Jodico Road. The purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for the short-listed firms for SPOLOST-funded transportation projects, intersections, including sidewalks, bid number 15-54 for the design services of Jodico Road at Oak Grove and Jodico Road at Daley Mill. Five sealed bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available in the project budget. The lowest bid is $50,000 from McGee Partners. Staff recommends awarding the bid for the design services of Jodico Road at Oak Grove and Jodico Road at Daley Mill to McGee Partners in the amount of $50,000.
Anybody have any comments or question? Resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding the bid for engineering design services for Jodico Road at Oak Grove Road and Jodico Road at Daley Mill Road. Have a motion District Three, second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Resolution awarding a bid for engineering design service for Campground Road at SR155. Rocky.
Yes, Chairman. Campground Road at State Route 155 is an approved District Three SPOLOST IV project. Again, purchasing department issued an invitation to bid to the short-listed firms for SPOLOST-funded transportation projects, intersections, including sidewalks, bid number 15-55 for the design services of Campground Road at State Route 155. Five sealed bids were received and reviewed. Funding for design services is available in the project budget. The lowest bid is $85,000 from URS Corporation. Staff recommends awarding the bid design services for Campground at 155 to URS in the amount of $85,000.
Anybody have any comments or question? Resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for engineering design service for Campground Road at State Route 155. Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Resolution awarding a bid for engineering design service for Mount Carmel Road at Chambers Road.
Yes, Chairman. Mount Carmel at Chambers Road is an approved District Two SPOLOST IV project. Purchasing department issued an invitation to bid, bid number 15-56 for the bid services of Mount Carmel at Chambers. Five sealed bids were received and reviewed. Funding for design services available in the project budget. A traffic study will be conducted at this intersection to determine whether a roundabout or a traffic signal will be the best type of improvement at this intersection. The lowest bid is $80,525 from Heathen Lineback Engineers. Staff recommends awarding the bid design for Mount Carmel at Chambers to Heathen Lineback Engineers in the amount of $80,525.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for engineering design service from Mount Carmel Road at Chambers Road. Here's second.
Second.
Second, District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I did have a question. How's the shortlist working out since our first go with shortlist?
Yes, Commissioner, it's working really good. So far with this, has been over 11 projects that have been awarded for design. We have a third wave out right now that is gonna be out for design, and then it's gonna have about eight additional projects. So, so far, in less than a month, we have been able to approve by the board 10 projects or 11 projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else want to make a comment? As noted, planning zoning, public care, RZ14-1 had been taken off the agenda. Next, we have a public care in MC15-04, North Henry Baptist Church Incorporated. Stop Regi, request a modification- North Henry Baptist Church Incorporated, Stoppage Jordy, request a modification of a zoning condition for the property located at 1093 Flat Rock Road and Land Lot 96 of the 12th District. The property is Zoned C1, general commercial, consisting of 5.03 plus amount of acres. The request modification is to allow a monument sign meeting the ULDC height limitations. Dante, good evening.
Yes sir. North Henry Baptist is a client of mine, and in fact, I have a plat in the package for this. I do not have any vested interest in the outcome of this. Should I recuse myself? And I'd rather err on the side of caution with this.
The rule only requires you to recuse if you have a financial interest in the project. But if, if it's close, if you're uncomfortable, I would recommend you recuse.
I actually don't recuse myself from this one, seeing how I actually have a plat in this paperwork. I just don't, I would rather err on the side of caution, so.
Thank you. Dante?
Good evening Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As part of the rezoning that this subject property went through in 2009, there were 14 conditions that were placed on the property. And condition number five specifically is what the applicant is requesting an amendment to or a modification to. And I'll place it on the overhead for your viewing. Condition number five is in bold on the overhead. And in summary, the condition limits their ground signage to eight feet in height, and it also places restrictions on the architectural design. What the applicant is simply requesting is to comply with the current ULDC regulations with the same, same architectural design standards. And, but the current ULDC will allow the ground signage to be up to 15 feet. And to conclude, planning staff has no objections with the applicant's request, but offers the following suggestion as to wording regarding the modification of the fifth condition. And it states, "Primary ground sign that shall consist of monument-based sign" that is, excuse me, "Primary ground signs shall consist of a monument-based sign that is consistent in design with the primary structure constructed of brick, stone, stucco, or any combination thereof. Monument signs shall be allowed in the future right-of-way prior to the construction of new roadways provided that all future relocations of the signs are at the property owner's expense." At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any Commissioner has any question for the staff at this time? If not, will applicant please come forward, please? And state your case, please, you have 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I'm Stan Jordan, the pastor of North Henry Baptist Church. Several years ago, about six and a half or seven years ago, we completed a new worship center, and we had to incur a little bit of indebtedness. And so, we don't like to incur indebtedness. And we thought that since the future land use plan of Henry County showed that that corner would potentially be a commercial zone, that it would be prudent for us to have it rezoned C1, even though we didn't really have any plans of selling it, but just if we needed to, to get rid of our indebtedness. We paid off the indebtedness in, in three years. And then, since then, this land was undeveloped. We have developed it into a softball, baseball field, and a soccer field. So, we have no intention of selling this piece of land, and we incurred no indebtedness on doing that work. So, the church doesn't have any indebtedness. And we're just simply asking that, since it's gonna be a church sign instead of a business sign, that we follow the code that is in place for a church sign our size, like the gentleman already explained. And I'll answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? If not, I'm gonna open up for a public hearing. Do you have anybody here that's in favor of this proposed rezoning hearing? Well, it's a conditional zoning hearing. Hearing none, I'll reset the clock, 15 minutes. Anybody that's opposed this zoning condition, come to the podium and state your name. Seeing none, I declare that the public session, public hearing session is completed. And if the applicant will come back forward, please, and I yield the floor to District Five.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District Five.
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, no, same sign, so move. You can come back now, Mr. Prince. You was watching this on TV, wasn't you? Resolution authorized Chairman to execute letters of support agreeing to provide electricity and lighting as needed or required, and all maintenance costs for landscaping at the intersection of SR 81 Snappin' Shoals Road after construction of a roundabout is complete. Terry.
Georgia DOT has requested that the county sign a letter stating our agreement, as the Chairman stated, to provide the full and entire cost of the electric energy use for any lighting installed as needed or required, and second, any maintenance costs associated with landscaping of the intersection after construction is complete in order to show support for consideration of a roundabout as a feasible alternate at State Route 81 and Snappin' Shoals Road. This resolution would just simply authorize the Chairman to sign the letter of support that came from Georgia DOT. I might add that in this lighting, I have requested that it would be LED lights, 'cause the energy use cuts down probably 90% if you go to LED light. So, I did email them and make that request that I would recommend support of this if they would do that, and they agreed that at the time that we, they'll send us a actual lighting agreement as the project moves forward, and I will include that in that documentation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody got any questions or comments? I yield the floor to District Three.
Terry, as you well know, we've had a tremendous amount of accidents in this area. Several fatalities, a young man died about a year ago. And, you know, Terry and I went out there the next day and looked at the intersection. And we did go back Terry, and then made some improvements to, I was part of the road. We put some rumble strips down, and we've asked, he asked DOT to look at this intersection and see what they could do, maybe to help us do this. This moves us a step closer to getting a roundabout there, and I totally support this.
Yes sir, we, I think we put rumble strips, and we cleared some brush, and did some other improvements just to do everything that we could to make sure that stop sign was visible. But there has been a notable accident history at that location, and I think that's why Georgia DOT proposes a roundabout at that location. This, this letter needs to be in their files so they can continue their process of working toward running this study to see if the roundabout is the appropriate solution. So, this is something that they want to make sure that the county is in support of this project before they continue on with it.
Any other questions or comment? Has a resolution authorized Chairman to execute letter of support agreeing to provide electricity and lighting as needed or required in all maintenance costs for landscaping intersection SR 81 Snappin' Shoals Road after construction of the roundabout is completed. Have a motion District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution authorizing the Chairman to execute letter of support agreeing to provide electricity and lighting as needed or required for all maintenance costs for landscaping for intersection SR 155 Pinola Road after construction of the roundabout is completed.
Chairman, this, and board, this is the exact same request as we just went through at 81 and Snappin' Shoals. So, I won't go over those details again, but it is located at State Route 155 and Pinola Road. I know there's been a lot of interest in making some improvements to that location. So, again, this is the step that says that the board is in support of this project. We'll send that back to Georgia DOT in hopes that it'll be sooner rather than later.
Anybody got any questions or comment? Have a res- We have a motion to approve resolution authorizing the Chairman to execute letter of support agreeing to provide electricity, lighting as needed and required in all maintenance costs for landscaping of the intersection SR 155 Pinola Road after construction of the roundabout is completed. They're second. Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you Chairman and Board.
As noted on the agenda, we took the public hearing request for temporary road closure and moved it to another place. From there, we moved down to finance, resolution to approve a fund balance policy, Fred. The Financial Director.
Evening Chairman, Commissioners. A little over a couple of weeks ago, the Chairman and I had a meeting, and during that meeting, he asked me if I would have put together a fund balance policy and bring it to the board for approval. Actually, GASB, which governs accounting policies and rules, Statement Number 54 actually required back years ago that we actually put a policy statement in place. So, this is gonna take care of that for the county. I have referenced in the executive summary, a couple of places where recommendations are made by ACCG and GFOA, and attached, excuse me, the ACCG presentation that was done by someone for the newly elected Commissioners, in which at that time, in that presentation, recommendation was for three months of an assigned fund balance. GFOA, as I indicate, says that at a minimum, that there should be two months. Two months would be equivalent of 16.7%. But they also go on to state that you also need to consider a number of other items, which I've put in here for your review as well. Fund balance is defining the fund balance classifications, terms. We've been using those terms in our CAFR each year as required by GASB 54. It is to establish a minimum unassigned fund balance, but you'll see that figure, or that is left blank. Chairman had asked that I would leave that figure blank for the board to decide on that figure, percentage, and number of months. And then it gives a timeframe for the event of deficiencies in the minimum unassigned fund balance. Answer any questions you may have.
Anybody got any questions or comments? I think the reason we don't have any questions, I think the board is, weekend, about two weekends ago, I think we pretty well debated this. I think the, we're somewhere between 20% fund balance. I'm for 20%, so I'll fill in the blank, I'll go 20% and plus whatever that would equate on the current budget would be the months. That would be, that would be more than two months, I know that, 20% will, but I don't know exactly what it would be in the current. That's my suggestion. So, having said that, somebody else throw a number out. You got a 25 here, okay? You got a 25?
Well, putting it in perspective of, you know, just basic budgeting, is 25% works out to be three months, which the presentation showed three months was a good standard to have. And, and it looked like when we looked at all the other districts, some had five months, some had 20%. But three months or 25% seem to be the, the standard to keep us safe. And, and I think it's, you know, as Commissioners, everyone that's on this board came on as a Commissioner, and there was a fund balance. And for us to go through, not protect fund balance, would be a mistake for the future of the county and, and future Commissioners who sit in this seat. So, I think that's, that's a healthy level of 25%.
Anybody else have any comments? Yes sir.
As you know, we, we have 25% plus in there right now, and I just feel it would be a shame for us to use the, you know, 5%, burn it down, when any of the past Commissioners could have done this and left us, you know, real pickle. So, I'm gonna say 25% is what I'm comfortable with. Again, it's there already, I think we should just leave it alone and budget based on what we have and what we can take in.
We have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners, to approve a fund balance policy, which if somebody would move to fill in that blank, make a motion to that effect.
Just one note, there are two blanks in there. One is for a percentage, and I think down below, there's months, and obviously-
That's what I'm saying, so.
Yep, excuse me.
One is 25%, I think that's the majority in approximately three months. You put, use the word approximately, that would be that amount, would it? Okay, so if somebody would move to approve a resolution to do that. And I, I think you'd need to say 25% and also the approximately three months, just to fill in the blank. Because, okay, we have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move, thank you. Resolution approving refunding the Henry County Development Authority Series A Revenue Bond dated July the 18th, 2007 for new bonds. Fred.
Thank you again. On April 21st, I presented to the board the refunding of these bonds. The potential savings was in excess of 3.3 million, based on six years. There were other presentations made, and basically, the board said, "Get with the county manager and get an agreement as to the number of years and how to, how that, those payments should be made." I got with Sherri on our county manager, and she and I are in agreement that we should go with six years on refunding. What you have in your package is an option that Sherri thought would be good to let you make, 'cause this came up in the last meeting as well. There was some discussion on it, and that was, I've labeled the two, and there's two resolutions. You can pick the one you want, rather than trying to figure out within one. One resolution states that will be refunded based on six years, what I call straight line. It's basically about $1,730,000 per year for the six years, that's one. That affects the savings for the county, and I'll just put this up here, just as a small recap. Here it is, excuse me. So, what you have is on the straight line, on the straight line, again, 72 months, six years, $10,355,000, and it's $355,000 more because of closing costs. The closing cost included there. The interest we will be paying on six-year straight line, meaning $1,730 approximately per, per year, would, the interest would go to $519,000, whereas today, that interest is $4,200,000. Basically, we're gonna be paying 12% of what the interest would have been if we do not refund. The net savings because of the closing cost after that is $3,343 on a straight-line basis. The effective interest rate is 1.341, obviously less than 1.5%. The other one is, is, is basically where the payments are more at the end, staggered, graduated, where the payments in the beginning and the first four years are less, and they're more in the last. Same 10,355 closing cost, the interest is going to be $579,000, approximately $60,000 more. And the savings, of course, would be about $60,000 less. The effective interest rate is 139, almost 140. So, there's a higher, obviously, effective interest rate because the notes that are gonna be paid at the last couple of years will have more principal to be paid still at that time, and the interest rates on longer-term debt is at a higher rate. I'll take any questions you may have.
Anybody got any questions? I got a resolution in the book, resolution approving refunding Henry County Development Authority Series A Revenue Bonds dated July the 18th, 2007. Authority Series A Revenue Bonds dated July the 18th, 2007, with new bond debit for a term of six years.
Straight line or?
Have a motion?
I think the-
Oh, you have a question?
Well, yeah, because you have a que, you have two things, don't you? Do we have to defer it or straight line? Don't you want to know?
Yes, you just pick one of the two.
Right, and so don't we need to have a discussion on whether deferred or straight line? I was just going to give my thoughts.
One is, one is saving more money. Either way, you pay it off in six years.
But wasn't it only $5,000 a year?
No.
That was 5,000. How much?
Next, next year, FY16, there will be a $680,000 savings to the budget, 675 on the other one. But the total overall six-year savings, there's $60,000 difference between the two.
Right.
You messed me up now. This, this resolution in the book only addresses a six-year straight line. Is that correct?
There's, there's two resolutions in there.
Oh.
As I said, I put two in there as opposed to giving you a box to check, and that way you can throw one away and keep one. Commissioner Preston, to your point, this was a discussion last time, by graduating the payments more to the end, that means that we would be paying less in the earlier years. But at the present time, our budget is roughly $4.7 million for debt. We have debt that's coming off in the next number of years. We still will end up, as I said, next year, with the savings of 680,000 to the budget for that, at the straight line. It continues on, but that figure continues to be each of the future years, less than what this year's budget is, even with it at straight line. So, even though you're paying it off faster, saving interest, the bottom line is, each year from here forward, there will be less end-up debt being paid coming out of your general fund. The other is that I didn't mention is that the end of six years, this county will be virtually almost out of, totally out of debt. The end of six years, we'll have one more payment remaining for approximately $1 million on the jail, which you, we refunded last year, the last payment's due in 2023 fiscal year. And the only other debt that will remain besides that one is the other cotton fields debt of $1,200,000, which by that time will be down to, or excuse me, $2,200,000, and by that time, it'll be down to $1,500,000. So, at that point, if you want to become 100 percent out of debt, you can pay the $1,500,000 off, and there'll be no more debt. The county would be virtually out of debt at that point.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure, I'll also clarify, when we talked about this at a previous meeting, we've accelerated the payoff, correct? I mean, because six years-
Yes.
Is the accelerated schedule.
Yes.
Meaning, we reduced it even more so. So, I think, I just want the public to understand, as well as the citizens who are, you know, who are here, it's pretty unusual to see, because it's been one of my things I've noticed over the last three, four years that I've been on the board, is that sometimes we've refinanced, but the savings didn't accelerate the debt repayment, that we actually used those savings to keep things rolling forward. I think it's kind of unusual, it's novel, and it's good for the taxpayers that we're actually accelerating the payment of this debt by four full years.
No, actually, this debt presently goes to 2032. It's a 17-year note right now, and it comes down to six, so it's really big savings.
The, the other part that, but I wanted to give the counterpoint that, that we have some unique things coming up, that, y'all know, we just ordered a lot of police cars. We're opening up a fire station in 2015. We're opening up additional fire stations in 2016. We have a senior slash rec center coming on in District Two in the next year. So, I mean, we have some unique budgetary things that are all loading up all at once, and then, as you even said, our debt repayment cliffs to a degree. Some of this will be repaid, and then it goes down in the coming years, so.
I think you, I think you have in your package, I think I included a legal pad page. Is there a legal page in your package? Basically, it shows that if you do the straight line in 2017, there'll be a $1,300 reduction to what you presently have in your FY15 budget, so that there will be $1,300 additional dollars to deal, to work with, if you would, in the budget. The same figure for the other, and then 17 is $1,100 versus $1,400. I had to stagger those payments, so the difference is about $300,000, but you still end up with $1,134,000 reduction to the budget because of the other debts that are falling off, even though this is being accelerated. So, and that, that comes down to, in 2021, it's still $1,500,000, $5,000,000, whatever, that you still have to this year's budget. So, bottom line is, even on the straight line, you still end up with big savings for your budget and the general fund in future years. Which can take care of those items.
So, is your recommendation to do the deferred method, based upon?
My recommendation is the straight line.
The straight line.
Okay. And Sherri, Sherri and I have been in agreement on that as well.
Very good.
Okay. Yes, sir. District Four.
Fred, I'm excited to hear, talking actually about getting the county out of debt. You know, one of my campaign things was fiscal integrity, and it's exciting to be sitting here talking about getting the county out of debt in six years. You know, I, I've looked at the numbers, I've been over everything, and, you know, I really, I'm in favor of doing the straight line. I don't want to kick the can and make the next Commissioners have to deal with the higher payment. I'd rather just bite the bullet now, get this done, get us the bet, you know, pretty much out of debt in six years, and then we can take this county in a new direction. So, I'm in favor of the straight line.
Any other comments? We've got two resolutions in the book. One is a six straight line annual principal, and one is debit with six graduated annual principal. So, will somebody-
Approve the straight line.
Move which one?
Straight line.
Straight line. We have a motion here to approve resolution refunding Henry County Development Authority Series A Revenue Bonds dated July the 18th, 2007, with new bonds, debt, or term of six years. And this would be the, whereas the Finance Director and County Manager have come to an agreement that the most advantage, that advantageous is a term for a six-year straight line. Have a motion. Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Fred. Human Resources Resolution Upgrade an Attorney III Position to an Attorney IV Position with the District Attorney's Office, Human Resources Director, Ms. Swift. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll be very brief. You have before you a resolution from the District Attorney. He has a vacant Assistant District Attorney III position that he'd like to reclassify and upgrade to an ADA IV position, and associated with that is the approval of a budget amendment. There is a vacant ADA position in his office. It's designated at a pay grade 33. The request is to have it upgraded to an Attorney IV with a pay grade of 40, minimum salary of $71,081, and that would be the starting salary. Based on the qualifications set forth in 2007 for the Assistant District Attorney pay scale, a person on the Attorney IV position would have six years of experience as an attorney, or five years' experience as an Assistant District Attorney. Allowing this upgrade would enable to hire a more experienced attorney and/or one with prosecutorial experience. The budget amendment would be $8,858.93, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any question, comment? Now, we have a resolution to upgrade an Assistant District Attorney's III position to an Assistant District Attorney IV position within the District Attorney's Office. Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Five. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You had to wait around, be last, and it was that quick. Thank you so much. Good job. Approval of amendments for April the 21st in the back of the book. Somebody move, we approve this, publish, or we have an amendment to correct any of them? Have a motion from District One to approve. Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Chairman has no comments? Any other Commissioner has any comments? Yes, sir. I yield the floor to District Four.
I'd actually like to thank the Henry County Sheriff's Department and the Henry County Police Department. About two weeks ago, the Henry County Sheriff's Department, in coordination with Drug Task Force, found 20 kilos of cocaine in my district and was able to pull that out of the street. I really appreciate that. One of the things I don't hear from my constituents is about drug issues, and I'd like to give a thank you to Henry County Canine, who I believe was last Thursday, found two pounds of meth and pulled those off the street. So, just thank you to them, and we appreciate what you do, and please keep it up.
Can't even see. Yet from County Managers, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time? County Attorney, you have any comments?
No, sir.
They're coming to meetings Wednesday, May the 27th, at 9:00 a.m. is a call meeting to adopt the proposed FY 2016 budget. Tuesday, June the 2nd, 9:00 a.m. is a regular meeting. Tuesday, June the 16th, at 6:30 p.m. is a regular meeting. Somebody move, we adjourn. Have a motion District Three? Second District One. Any further discussion? All raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. I can do, I can do, wait a minute now. Okay, we've got to do it next week, because I'm going to leave tomorrow. I will be back till Monday. So, next, next week, I've got that window, we need to do it. Let's do it. Just keep with Marilyn, she knows my schedule better than me. Just tell her when it will work for you, and I'm in there, and she'll do it. Will that work for you? I can help you. Okay.